Okay, well, it's six o'clock. Nice trip down memory lane, but I'm going to call our meeting of the Tuesday, September 17th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, calling it to order. Would you all please join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Painter, will you please call the roll?
Chair Keeney.
Present.
Vice Chair List.
Present.
Member Friend. Member Lepa.
Present.
Member Rains. Member Rains?
Here.
Thank you.
We'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or any member of the audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. Do any of the commissioners want to remove the adoption of the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to number six, items of interest to the public. This is where we have a portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda. And I don't see any members of the public who would like to address this. So let's move on then to number seven, the environmental assessment public hearing section of the meeting. This time, we'll have a presentation about item 7.1, 3171 Washington Street, a site plan review SPR 19-02 for Placerville Orthodontics. I'll turn it over to Mr. Painter for the staff report.
Yes, thank you. Tonight is a request for an exterior lighting plan. It was submitted by Henry Mazur, who's in the audience this evening, and he's representing the property owner, Matthew Sanders, of Nemo Properties LLC. The site location is 3171 Washington Street, and it has a zone classification and general plan designation of business professional airport overlay. On the site is an existing single-story dental office building with approximately 4,200 square feet of floor area. To the interior of the site are paved parking spaces for the office use, and the site is bordered to the south and east by cut slopes. Provided in your packet tonight, the applicants provided kind of a panorama to show the view from the office building looking in a south and, to some extent, a westerly direction, to give you an idea of the parking area. City records show that the office building dates back to 1967, and in '88, the site experienced a request for an expansion, so the building was expanded by approximately 1,000 square feet in 1988. The county assessor office records from this year have assessed the value of the existing land and improvements at just over $350,000. The site is currently undergoing interior and exterior remodeling with a valuation of $300,000. This work is authorized under city permit. Part of this remodeling and site improvements is in regards to replacing all the exterior lighting, and that is the subject of tonight's request. And because of the city code requirements regarding the assessment and the valuation of tonight's, or the overall scope of work there on the site, this particular request comes before you due to a section in city code under the city's exterior lighting regulations at 10416C, giving the planning commission the authority to approve the exterior lighting plan for this site. The lighting regulations contain standards that new exterior lighting is subject to. These standards were provided on page three of the staff report. Also provided on page three are the site plan review design criteria that specifically address exterior lighting. On page four of the staff report are the relevant exterior lighting guidelines from the city's development guide. Staff analyzed the request against these regulations, the design criteria, as well as the guidelines. We found it consistent with the site plan review and development guide, design criteria and guidelines. As of the preparation date of this report, staff could not determine with certainty, based on the photometric analysis provided, that the project lighting at the parking lot areas along the southern boundary of the property and to the west along Washington Street would or would not exceed our maximum threshold of light intensity of 0.3-foot candles. Staff conditioned the request as part of tonight's application. Staff did discuss this issue with Mr. Mazur, who's in the audience this evening, and he has consulted with his lighting consultant and has prepared an amendment to his plan. The photometric plan, a copy of it was provided to you in a folded fashion, and we have a full-size sheet on the wall along with the fixtures that are proposed. The light intensity levels, as shown on the photometric plan, do not exceed our threshold, so they are consistent with city code. Staff therefore finds that this particular request would be consistent with our exterior lighting regulations, as amended by the applicant. Staff finds also that this is a minor alteration to an existing structure and site which would qualify the request for a categorical exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act per Section 15301A. This item was publicly noticed, and under the city's public hearing procedures, no public comment was received, and I don't see any public in the audience this evening either. Staff supports the request as presented and as amended by the applicant. Staff recommends the commission take the actions on page five, including making findings under Roman numerals two and three, and approve the request with conditions as provided under Roman numeral number four. Chair Keeney, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff at this time?
If the other, the item five that was up in question about the outdoor illumination, will we need to amend that part of the conditions as well, or would that stay in?
I still think it's warranted to have that condition there, because at building permit, we will be evaluating the request. I'm assuming if you approve the photometric, he will likely submit the same plan.
Okay.
If not, a copy of that. So we think it's warranted to continue to have that condition.
Okay, thank you.
And could you just explain the numbers on the amended plan? I noticed that, on this line...
Yeah, the solid line should be the property boundary.
The solid, oh, here.
Yeah.
Well, I see a couple of numbers, .9, .7. Is that the foot candle estimate?
Yes.
So at that area, that still could be a little problematic since the standard is .3. Is that right? So that's one thing that the building department would have to, or the inspector would have to assess.
Correct.
And make a, so that's a good reason, or the reason to keep condition five in, as listed in the staff report. Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to ask Mr. Mazur, would you like to step up to the podium and tell us a little bit about the proposed project? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Henry Mazur. I'm the general contractor on the project, and we are proposing the new photometric plan for the lighting on the parking lot. You just made a point about the .7. That is on the side of the cliff, which is approximately maybe 15 feet high.
That is.
The property line is above, on the very top of the hill.
Really high.
If you look at the picture up there, you can see the little fence up on top of the hill. That is where the property line is. So basically, that light wash is on the side of the hillside.
Okay.
So it doesn't affect anything.
This doesn't show us the slope of the lot, but it just shows us where the property line falls and...
Right, right.
Okay.
That is why I made the pictures. Our property is like in a, in kind of a bowl, you know? It's all cut out, and the building is placed on one side, so we have basically cliffs all around us. And out in front on Washington Street, we're about 25, 30 feet from the property line where the parking lot starts.
Is there a third light?
There was.
Yeah, right, to clarify, yeah.
Yeah, we had to remove that light so we could get it down to the .3 at that area where the property line is, but...
So on here, where you indicated the third light, that's no longer going to be there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then also to supplement what Henry's talking about, the wall fixture that would have been on the, near the driveway encroachment entrance, there was one...
Here.
On the gable end.
On the gable end of that. Keep going south, keep going south.
Here.
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
That's been removed as well.
Okay.
To further...
There was a light.
Yes.
Yes, there was a light in the center of that gable.
So by moving it, removing those, moving the pole to reduce that lighting?
Good, thank you. Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions about that front post light, just the house and everything like that, so I think I should relieve a lot of that question. Good.
Okay, very good. We are proposing this lighting plan for the safety of the staff and the public, because it's going to be getting dark soon, and all the ladies who work there get a little scared when they leave the office when it's dark.
How late at night do they, do you anticipate business hours?
Business hours is until 5:00, and sometimes a little bit later, but you know, at 5:00 in the wintertime, it's dark, so...
I've been by the building. You are doing extensive repairing or remodeling. It's going to look fantastic when you're finished.
Thank you very much.
And I drove around the parking lot, and you're at that, the hillside behind you goes straight up.
Yes, it does.
And then you're almost on Corker, but there's not much around but the house next to you.
Yes.
So I can see where, I'd be nervous too, leaving at night.
Yes.
And it's great to have those new lights with the new remodeling, particularly when you're kind of in, like you said, down in a bowl.
Right.
And I was pleased to see your neighbor was happy to have the lights.
Absolutely.
So the both of you can kind of, you know, keep the vagrants away. I'm quite excited to go see, look at, when it's all finished.
Right. Yeah, he took a picture of a vandal that showed up a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, so I can see the staff would worry about that, and the ladies would worry about that.
Yeah, we've had some problems there.
Very well done.
Any more questions?
I think not. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commissioners for possible action. This looks like a good reuse, redevelopment of the property, and seems like it's very straightforward. The staff report, as always, covers all the points, including this one that, although at this point, it seems very straightforward and may not be a problem, we have the caveat that the lighting will be verified, that we stay within the standards, because light pollution is, it is a cause for concern, so you have to balance that with safety. Any other comments from the commissioners? Do you have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. A motion to adopt the staff, oh, sorry, to approve the site plan review 1902. Recommend that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, find that the request is categorically exempt from the SEQA Act, find the following findings about the request being reviewed inconsistent with the purpose and the lighting requirements, and four, conditionally approve the site plan review to modify the existing exterior lighting and apply only to the project, not be transferred to another parcel, and all of the findings within that.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Painter, we call the, call the roll.
Member Rains.
Yes.
Vice Chair List.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Yes.
Member Lepa.
Yes.
Okay. You have your approval. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Technically, there is an appeal period. We have to wait, but, yeah. 10, actually, 10 days. You could submit for plan check.
Good luck.
You too.
At this point, I just want to clarify. I don't think I made it clear when we did item four that we were both adopting the agenda and approving the regular meeting minutes. I think I misread that. I think I said adopt the agenda, and I didn't say the word "regular meeting minutes." Is it out of order to go back and clarify that, or can we just clarify that in the minutes, that that was the action 4.1?
You could formally amend your action and re, how about this way? Do all of you consent to what the chair is asking?
To approve the minutes?
To approve the minutes, as well, with the previous action taken at 4.1.
Is there any...
There are no objections, then that would be fine with staff. We can note that.
Okay, thank you very much. I know that the eyes of the public are upon us, and I want to make sure that we follow the procedure.
Engulf, they call that a meligan.
Engulf, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner List, we'll move on to item eight, matters from commissioners and staff. This item involves commission member and development services department staff comments and reports. So are there any other, any matters from commissioners at this time? Okay, we'll move on to, we were handed a copy of a memo and a copy of the Lega California Cities publication Lex Ex parte. So I'll turn that over. Staff, would you like to discuss that at this time?
Well, it's not meant for discussion, but this is a, we are providing the materials that you, Chair Keeney, did request that we print and make available to the membership.
Okay.
With the caveat that Director, he's, Director Rebus is about to, about to ask and poll you regarding potential dates on having a workshop regarding that particular issue, so...
Okay. Mr. Rebus?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Staff consulted with our city attorney, Mr. John Driscoll, and he would be most pleased to provide a workshop regarding ex parte communication. Very, very important that all commissioners attend, especially the one particular commissioner that's not here tonight. We want to make sure that he will attend, because I know he had particular questions regarding ex parte communications, Mr. Friend. Mr. Driscoll is certainly available at your next meeting. It would be scheduled on October the 8th, I'm sorry, October the 1st, and just want to poll and see if everybody will be attending that, that meeting?
Yes.
Because if so, and Mr. Friend gets back to us and he can attend, we will schedule a workshop with Mr. Driscoll on that date.
Are there any other public hearings or anything scheduled for the first of October?
Yes, staff is proposing to bring to you a discussion item where we will ask the commission to provide recommendations regarding further regulation of formula business within the central business district. So we'll have a menu of a number of different options that the city can take regarding that.
We'll just be discussing...
And we will be discussing it, and then you can formulate recommendations that staff will bring then to the council. Staff will be bringing, will be conducting a sort of a workshop with the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee this Friday, and that's at noon on the same topic.
So that's on the 20th at noon? You'll be having a meeting with the, I'm sorry, with whom?
The Placerville Economic Advisory Committee.
Economic Advisory, okay.
Yes, and that's at 12:00 noon here in Town Hall, here in this room, if anybody cares to attend.
At 12:00 noon, okay.
So at this...
How long do you think, so the two of you think that we have plenty of time on our, on the first, to cover both of these?
Yeah, we have no other public hearing items. In fact, these will just be workshops, and so Pierre and I were thinking about limiting the time on these topics, but maybe we haven't ferreted those out yet, but we want to be sensitive to city attorney Driscoll's time, and, I don't know, Pierre, do you have any?
In my discussions with Mr. Driscoll, the workshop really shouldn't take too much time. It's rather simple as to where you cross a line and where you don't. If you're having discussions or a meeting with an applicant prior to the actual meeting on an item, so feel free to bring, maybe think about it and have questions you would like to raise with, with the city attorney, so that you can come more prepared. But I'm thinking maybe that workshop shouldn't last more than a half hour, probably less. I would think that the central business district, because there's a number of different options, a number of different approaches the city can take, from doing a general plan amendment and creating a new zone district, and then making map amendments, and then regulating formula business in a lot of different ways. We can look at it geographically, where we could look at modifying the central business district zone, district text to further regulate or do a complete ban, or only regulate certain kinds of central business, or certain kinds of formula businesses, such as maybe eating and drinking establishments. There's a complete ban as opposed to allowing maybe retail or banks, that kind of thing. So think about it, and then maybe limiting it geographically within the central business district zoned area, which extends basically from Lower Main all the way up to some of the properties there at about Cedar Ravine. We could limit it to be from Sacramento Street just to Bedford or on to Cedar Ravine. So we could, there's a lot of different ways we can look at this. So we'll be bringing you options, we'll bring some maps, and maybe get a sense of where the commission would like to go and what you would like to recommend for the council to consider. So what we'll do is we'll just, once we have the recommendations, again, it's not, it's not extremely, it's not formal, it's a little more informal, and the reason why I say that is because we will take these items or what we can gather from both the Economic Advisory Committee and from this commission to the council, and we'll take to the council a resolution of intent to amend either the general plan amendment or the general plan and/or the zoning code. And then once they do that, then they'll be directing staff to go through a more formal process, so then we would come back to this body with more formal amendments to our codes on further regulation, or do nothing at all, keep the status quo.
So you'll just be taking our ideas? We won't be asked to take action, or you'll just be...
We can take, probably we would, staff would probably want to look at maybe getting a sense of where there's consensus on the planning commission on what to do, on some of the options, so we can bring that to council, and then council will give staff direction on how we would like to proceed.
And will you be taking comments from the public as well, or is this for the commissioners' input at this time?
We won't take public comment on the workshop regarding ex parte communication, but we certainly can regarding the CBD zone and regulation of formula business.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rains, you had a question?
The historic district, I know we've got from Sacramento Street, say to Cedar Ravine, that's east and west. What's north and south? I'm assuming Pacific Street, but do we have a designated area, north and south?
Just for clarification, we currently do not have a historic district applied to any, any properties along the Main Street corridor. There is a recommended historic district that had gone through the historic advisory committee, and we have yet to bring that to this commission, but that will be another option. But basically, what that historic district would do is, it would require then the application or for property owners to go through a site plan review based on what, how they propose to develop or redevelop on the particular piece of property within that district.
So in essence, unlike Grass Valley in Nevada City, our historic district is predominantly Main Street?
No.
The city right now does not have an historic district along Main Street. We do have four current historic districts that are residential.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for our staff? Okay, thank you very much for scheduling all that and setting up the workshops.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh.
One more, one more item. Sour Dough &amp; Company, you're probably well aware that the city council considered two appeals. One appeal was filed by Friends of Historic Hangtown at Al, and then Kirk Smith filed a second appeal on your decision. So the city council denied both appeals. They then affirmed the action of the planning commission. They did make one change to condition number five that dealt with the sign. So they essentially directed that the sign would be, you know, they identified the materials, they identified the color, the size, and they basically directed then that the applicant would bring that sign back to staff, and it would be approved at the staff level. And I believe the reason why, at least would be my sense, that the council did that, because it didn't want to open up the door for yet further appeals and dragging out the application further.
So in essence, you had told me at one time that you would be bringing the sign to the planning commission. You also had told me at one time that you would be bringing the outdoor seating to the commission. So are you now telling me that both of those aspects were handled by the city council?
Well, actually, it was, it was this body, the planning commission basically adopted or approved the Sour Dough &amp; Company conditional use permit site plan review with the condition five, and you gave sort of a description, a menu, if you will, of certain components of that sign that you wanted to see the applicant to accomplish with respect to its size, material, lighting, and...
Color.
And then, and then you, you then, that condition said that they would submit plans for that sign, and we would bring that back to the planning commission. And so that went to council, and as a de novo application, then the council modified condition number five and made it a little more affirmative on what they wanted to see. So instead of, maybe they shall consider doing gooseneck lighting, the council required it. And so they were requiring a lot of components to that sign, what it should look like, and that will come back to the staff, and staff will then approve it and then can issue the permit for them to install the sign as it was approved by the council.
So has the color of the sign been determined?
Yeah, the color, I'm trying to remember. I think the color was earth tone in color.
Okay.
Gooseneck lighting.
Okay.
Size not to be greater than the existing Centro sign. Material, I think they were going to go, I think the applicant is going to come with wood, but I think there was a little bit more leeway in there as far as color. Wasn't going to be the plastic type of internally illuminated sign.
And Member Rains, as it relates to the outdoor seating, outdoor dining component, the applicant was waiting, pending the action taken on this appeal before they complete their, right now they have an incomplete application for their outdoor seating, outdoor dining. I have been given no indication as to when they're going to submit that, but it's our understanding that due to the number of tables that they want to put out there and the possibility of having alcohol consumed out in that location, it would trigger the planning commission review and approval of that outdoor seating. So at this point, we don't have a status as to that component.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that update. As I recall, the city council used more affirmative language than we did. We left it more open for options and then also reduced the size. They, I think that we had said no larger than what had been previously proposed, and I think they scaled it down to the existing of Centro sign.
Size of Centro.
Right, which is only 20, some 14 square feet less, so it'll be a little bit smaller than what they had originally discussed.
And no higher than Centro.
And on the location of the building. Okay. Very good. Any other items from staff for us? Okay, anything else we need to discuss at this time? All right. It's 6:30, and I'll adjourn our meeting until October 1st. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.